Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coman.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our first Planning Commission meeting of 2022. It is my pleasure to call the order of the January 20th, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coman?
Here.
Commissioner Lumbis? Commissioner Bashertish? Commissioner Biddle? Commissioner Bowers?
Here.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item three, Public Statements.
Thank you. We will now receive public statements. This is the, this time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on item 5A through 5F, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item four, Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion to appro, may I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Kater, may I have a second, please?
Sorry. Is that, yeah.
I'm sorry. We're on four now. All right, may I have a second for the, we're on four. Yes. Lots of time to.
I'll second the motion.
That was Commissioner Wade. Madam Clerk, let's have a vote here. So we're gonna do that? Okay, there we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bashertish absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number five, Consent Public Hearings.
Okay. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If an item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? This will be now where you wanna.
I do not request, I do not request to remove any items at this time, but for the record, I will abstain from the consent public hearing item 5E as I am the applicant for the underlying request and the property is a source of income.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners wish to remove the consent item? At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendations.
That.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Wade, I'm sorry. That was, that was made by, I know your name. I just can't say it right now. I read about that. So that was Commissioner Bowers and Commissioner Wade. Madam Clerk, may I have a vote, please? Oh, here we go. There we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Biddle abstaining and Commissioner Bashertash absent.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry?
Just to clarify, she abstained from item 5E.
Is there a way to abstain from just, is that?
Yes.
So just vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So she's voting on all, all other items except for 5E?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item six, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
I would note for the record, there are no items. That's correct. So we will move on to item seven.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to workshops. We love workshops. Mr. Johnson, would you please revise with your workshop item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, if I could ask the clerk to put up the other slideshow, I would appreciate that. And tonight's workshop is on Senate Bills 9 and Senate Bill 10, and that will be provided by the Development Services Director, Christopher Boyle.
Mr. Boyle, welcome. Thanks for coming over here and seeing us today.
Thank you, Chair Coman. Commissioners, it's an absolute pleasure to be in council chambers and not have to wear a mask. As I digress, it's also an absolute pleasure. I want to thank you for the invitation to come and talk about SB 9 and SB 10. Let me make sure I got this thing going right. The title of my presentation is "The End of Single Family Zoning," or maybe not. I had, I had to do that because in looking at the, in looking, doing my research, I noted that Front Gate had actually, Front Gate Real Estate had actually produced a document along that title. Let's see what the, what the analysis shows. First, SB 9 Lot Splits and Duplexes. And I'm gonna kinda talk about these two components separately, and then I'll meld them together in the end. SB 9 comes out of San Diego Senator Tony Atkins, and it addresses lot splits and duplexes. It provides for the ministerial approval of converting existing homes, key existing homes occupied by a homeowner into a duplex if certain eligibility restrictions are satisfied. We'll talk about what those restrictions, those restrictions look like. It also allows for a single-family home lot to be split into two lots and a duplex to be built on each lot, provided that the initial home, remember, initial home, is occupied by an owner who continues to live in a unit as their primary residence for at least three years. So, when it comes to duplex, the ordinance restricts the local agency as to what can be required for the duplex on a single lot. Can only be applied, you can only apply objective development standards, and that's something that will be, will be discussed at the Planning and Development Committee meeting in February. But objective standards are essentially where there is no discretion involved. They are not subjective, they are objective standards. So when you think about an objective standard, think the setback for a home. That's, is it five feet or is it not five feet? There's a yes/no decision to be made when it comes to an objective standard. Standards cannot physically preclude either unit from being 800 square feet, so essentially, essentially you can't say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't do this here because, you know, you can't fit an 800 square foot lot, 800 square foot home on that particular lot. Setback requirements are four feet side and rear, and the property cannot already have an accessory dwelling unit or a junior ADU. So in essence, you can't do a duplex and then say, I'm gonna do an accessory dwelling unit and an ADU, junior ADU on the same parcel, essentially creating four parcels, I mean, four dwellings per lot. Two maximum. It also restricts the local agency as what can be required for a duplex on a single lot. So you can only apply those same objective standards, they can't preclude 800 square feet, property, property has the same setbacks, it can't already have an accessory dwelling unit. And there is also off-street parking requirements associated with that parking, and it's one stall per unit. And the only time that that's exempted is when the parcel is located within a half-mile walking distance of either a high-quality transit corridor or a major transit bus stop. The other option is if there's a car-share vehicle located within one block of the parcel. So those are very definitive opportunities, and that there may be, you know, I thought about this, and I think about the author, where the, where the law comes from, there, San Diego, you could probably, there are quality transit stops everywhere. So the application of this ordinance might very well create lots of opportunities for SB 9 duplexes and SB, SB 9 lot splits. But in the city of Bakersfield, this is the extent of our, our quality corridors for transit, and I don't know where I could get a lot, a car share in the city of Bakersfield. So there, there may be a car share, I can get a scooter right down the street, but in terms of car share, I do not know whether that's offered in the city whatsoever. So these are the main corridors, and they generally access CSUB and Bakersfield College and a particular high school on the north side of the river in the county. So typically, when looking at SB 9 then, and looking at creating duplexes on single-family residential parcels, we'll also be creating parking at the same time. Now let's talk about what the parcel map would look like. We understand what the, the parameters of taking a single lot and going with two units into a duplex. Let's see what it looks like if we were to move forward with shooting for four units on a single-family lot. So that's a ministerial permit as per the ordinance. So the local agency shall approve or deny the application ministerial without any discretionary review, wouldn't come to the Planning Commission or any other discretionary body. The map's approved only if it conforms with the objective requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. Here's where things start getting more interesting. The lot must be at least 40% of the original lot size and no less than 1,200 square feet in size. I kinda note, I did the math, if you did an 800-square-foot dwelling unit as the second unit on this, and the minimum lot size shall be 1,200 square feet, to make the four-foot setbacks, you're really beyond 1,300 square feet, but maybe you could provide for a two-story 800-square-foot unit. But that's a, it's not as, you know, it's not or no less than 1,200 square feet, it must be 40% of the lot. So when you think about most of the lots in the city of Bakersfield, where are the homes positioned? They're in the center of the lot, and so it's very difficult to find free space, 40% of the lot being in a backyard or available to create a second lot. So that may be different in, I, I went looking for them, I'll use one as an example here within this presentation. Public Works might be disappointed to learn that you're, you can have no required dedications of right-of-way, there can be no off-site improvements required as a component of approval of the, of the parcel map, no conditions that require off-site improvements or dedications of right-of-way. You may not impose standards that would affect or physically preclude construction of two units, but again, I don't have a lot stretcher, I can't make the lot larger on behalf of the, the proposed duplex. And so I, I can't have a condition, but the physical condition of the lot can be such that it cannot, it cannot actually provide for an 800-square-foot structure. There's no setback shall be required for an existing structure. When you think about some of the established neighborhoods in the community, many homes are built very close to property line, in some cases, right on property line. If that's the case as it exists, then that home can remain as such, you can't say, oh, you're gonna need to get a zoning modification because that home doesn't meet current standard. So if a home is, is closer to property line than the, provided for four feet, you can't, that doesn't preclude the, the project from moving forward. And again, the setbacks are four feet from side and rear, and, and what's curious enough is there is not a provision per, per this law as it relates to some reduction in standard from front yard setback, and since front yard setbacks are objective in nature, I don't see where the law is making provision to build structures in front yards. The city shall require an applicant to sign an affidavit that they're, that's her principal residence, they intend on staying there for three years. Another set of conditions would be, the local agency can require certain conditions of approval, but they're very specific in terms of providing for the, the subdivision or, or the duplex. You can provide easements to provide for the provision of public services, you certainly don't wanna build a, a structure over a, over a sewer lateral or something like that. So there'll be easements to provide for protection of utility. You can provide a requirement for both parcels to have access to or provide access to the public right-of-way, which is a typical of, of development where one wants to know that an individual has access to the, the city's right-of-way. And again, off-street parking of up to one space per unit can be required, the same as the exemption with the duplex, except with those exemptions if you're close to a transit corridor or what have you. There has to be a limitation of the use of that parcel for residential uses, and another thing would be that SB 9 doesn't not address covenants or conditions or restrictions, CCNRs that may prohibit multifamily development or lot splits. So if you do have CCRs that provide for restriction in that, a parcel can only be used for a single-family purpose, or you can't split that lot within your neighborhood's CCNRs, the ordinance doesn't say that it would usurp that authority, and that's a, that's a private-party matter, it's not something the city would, would have jurisdiction over. I did a little bit more digging just within trying to understand why there's that title I provided, and I love UC Berkeley as a source of information, and this particular, I, I ran into this particular graphic on openscopestudio.com, which was really an architectural firm that was providing what they, they could provide, and what's missing here is that there isn't an existing structure. So it, the ordinance wouldn't speak to creating four new structures. You might note that in each case, it talks about the existing structure, on a residential structure, and the property owner must remain in that structure, and there are other components that says you can't demolish more than 25% of the exterior walls of the existing structure, and so on and so forth, and this looks like a bare-dirt proposal within this graphic, and I say, well, unless one of those houses were there initially, it's not a viable example of what SB 9 can provide for. So, but nonetheless, I like the fact that they talked about the ordinance would allow for the creation of approximately 700,000 additional units, and so I wanted to know a little bit more through UC Berkeley. So UC Berkeley looked at all of the 10 largest cities in the state of California, and they got it right, we have about 87,500 single-family residential parcels in the city, and they, they made a determination that there, you could create approximately 9,000, or it would be feasible, total market feasible, new units if SB 9 were enacted, at about 9,000 units over 87,500 parcels. I dug trying to find the parameters with which they were doing that, because, you know, quite frankly, I had a really hard time finding a parcel that I felt like, here's a good example of where we could do this. I did find one, we'll talk about it, but I'm not sure whether they used the parameters that all these parcels would have a single, would, would qualify as, as no parking, would qualify for a no parking exemption, or there, there was an assumption that there would be high-quality transit routes throughout the ninth-largest city in the state, or what have you. But that's about the average. When you think about 700,000 new units, the average is about 10%. So there's an, that means that there's about 7 million single-family residential parcels in the 10 largest city in the state of California. You do the math, you kinda say, okay, this all makes sense, I'll go there, I'll take it to council and we can, to commission, and we can talk about it. So that's what they're saying about the total availability. When I looked at, when I went looking for a parcel, this parcel is north of 58 and west of South 8 Street, and this is a good example of where you have a 40% for your backyard, almost with certainty, and there's access to it, so you could even do a flag lot if you so desired, and the home itself, the front home has room to provide for a conversion into, into, you know, an accessory dwelling or a duplex type of structure without expansion of the use, which wouldn't preclude closing off access to the rear, and so they're, they are out there. I just questioned whether or not 10% of all single-family residential lots had that provision available to it, and, but I don't have, I don't have any of the parameters with which the study was done. I would say it, it might be closer to less than 5% without the possibility of really putting four units on it. Of course, most of the parcels, most parcels without the opportunity, they already have the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, in that we have ADU and junior ADU laws that provide for three units on a single-family parcel right here and now. So it's not really adding any new additional inventory or any additional tool if the purpose is to add additional density within our single-family residential neighborhoods. We actually already have that tools within state law for, and, and city law as it relates to junior ADUs and ADUs. Maybe an alternative might be that, and we'll, we're, we're going through a general plan update and a housing element update to provide for more opportunities for singles, single-family small lot developments that, that can sell people homes at affordable price. In the northeast quad, northwest quadrant of this graphic, all those lots are in 2,500-square-foot lots, they're single-family freestanding homes, be purchased by people. In fact, I did a tour with my staff of this area, and one of those things, those 2,400-square-foot lots was for sale for $400,000. It was destination, place people wanted to live there. After all, they didn't have a yard to take care of, there's a garage in these parcels, they could protect their vehicles, there was lots of community open space, boom, let's do that. On the southwest, the southeast quadrant, those homes are on 3,200-square-foot lots, 40 by 80s, similar situation, community open space, not a lot of maintenance, low-maintenance ISA homes that meet today's lifestyles. So those are, these are, these are examples of, of alternatives that we don't currently enjoy or have the opportunity here in the city to, to, to offer to our, our public. SB 10 is, comes from San Francisco's Senator Scott Wiener, and it's a housing upzoning ordinance, and what it basically allows for is that you can, there's a streamlined path which allows a local municipality to adopt an ordinance, that ordinance will come through you and through the city council, to rezone any parcel for up to 10 units of residential density, and that's per parcel, not per acre. So, and I tried to understand why that might be, might be a valid approach. And when you think about San Francisco, there's a lot of, there's a uniformity in their residential parcels, you know, throughout the city. So if the purpose was to add additional residential density, and the author comes from San Francisco, this might be a perfect type of additional density tool, and you could only call it out as per parcel, but in many municipalities where there's a, a wide variety of parcel sizes and much open land around it, San Francisco, the city and county of San Francisco being fully developed, maybe this law is, it doesn't really fully meet the purpose and intent of the original author. So the property in question would have to meet one of two criteria. One, we've already noted, we are not a transit-rich area. In San Francisco, very transit-rich, I haven't driven a car in that city in a long time when I go to visit, but why? I leave my car to Bart's Station in the East Bay and, and spend my entire day riding the muni or doing what have you. Great, great way to add 10 units on a single-family residential parcel. There isn't really a need for a vehicle. Or be an urban infill site, and in many cases, we are an urban infill site. We have many properties that would, would qualify as an urban infill property, but in no case can the rezone result in a reduction in allowed density. There's a lot of shals in this ordinance, you know, you, you shall include decorations that the zoning ordinance has adopted pursuant to this section pursuant to Section 65913.5. The zoning ordinance shall clearly demarcate the areas, so essentially, right now, we require legal descriptions and plot maps of, of when we rezone properties, and the same thing would be required here in this case, so that we could clearly demarcate the area that was being rezoned. You also, though, have to make a finding that the increased density authorized in the ordinance is consistent with the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing pursuant to Section 8899. Section 8899.5 is also linked to AB 215, and AB 215 is the Housing Crisis Act recently adopted, and that Housing Crisis Act also implements the, the enforcement arm of HCD in terms of ensuring that there is, there is housing element compliance, and, and if not, then you can be, have your housing element decertified, and that empowers HCD to do so. And so in making that finding, I, you know, you start connecting the dots and saying, couldn't I use the city's existing zoning approach to add for additional density and not be drawn into reporting requirements with HCD that, that, you know, adds an additional burden upon staff in terms of our reporting responsibilities? That, that particular condition there, although seems harmless, AFFH is a big deal with, with HCD today, and I understand why, but it kinda takes away the city's abilities by itself to take proactive steps in addressing affirmatively furthering fair housing and mandates it through a state agency, and that, that worries me. And in any case, the ordinance supersedes any zoning restriction, I would, I quoted that because it could have just as soon said, any zoning allowance, there's a, it's all contextual in state law. If the ordinance supersedes any zoning restriction established by the local municipality, the rezone shall only take effect if adopted by two-thirds of the members of the legislative body. So in order, if there, if there was some ordinance that the zoning ordinance would be superseding as a dynamic of its adoption process, it would need a two-thirds vote of both, both the Planning Commission and the city council. Also, the rezone itself, whereas rezones are typically discretionary in nature and require SEQA compliance, the rezone here would be exempted from SEQA, and, but the development subsequent to that would, would not be exempted from SEQA. Note, though, that if it's a permitted use in the SB 10 zone to put 10 units on that parcel, then you probably would use an exemption as being a ministerial process. And it's really 14 units because the creation of two accessory dwelling units and two junior accessory dwelling units is not a portion of the 10 units. So essentially, you could put 14 units on a parcel, so it's not really a 10-unit cap, it's really 14 units when you count the ADUs and the junior ADUs. So I would call it an SB 14 ordinance because, and there's many examples in So I would call it an SB14 ordinance because, and there's many examples in densified urban areas where the, the owner of an apartment complex used that component to add some accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units that could be, that could be maneuvered into and, and added to their overall development schema. So it is a tool for upzoning. I'm just not sure if it's the right tool in our municipality. It's, it's probably an outstanding tool in San Francisco where there's a much more fully-built-out urban form with lots of uniformity within their, their residential housing stock. In, in Bakersfield, I think that we have existing processes that adequately provide for additional densities at the wishes of the individual property owners per the approval of our discretionary bodies. Any questions? That completes my presentation. It was a pleasure to not have to wear a mask for a good 15 minutes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Any commissioners have any questions? Let me see, go back here. We'll just go right to Commissioner Wade, and then I'll get everybody else.
Would you mind going back to Slide 7? It showed the transfer, the ride pickup areas. See, the transportation corridors. Come on. There you go. Yeah. So am I right in assuming that as this law applies to the city of Bakersfield, the real limiting, the thing that limits this law's effect on our city primarily has to do with these transportation corridors?
The transportation corridor dynamic is that there's a real benefit in, when you're trying to densify an existing lot, let's just say you've got an 8,000-square-foot lot, and 40% of that is 3,200, 3,200 square feet. And so you're, you're like, oh, beautiful, I've got 3,200 square feet, but I can get two extra units on the back, I expand the existing unit. The missing ingredient is where do I find an additional 800 square feet of parking and provide for the pathways to queue those on-site? It's a real benefit to not have to address that issue when you're in a high-transit area. But unfortunately, the city doesn't enjoy that, that opportunity. And so consequently, you know, in almost every instance, and that's just a teeny parcel, part of the city that, you know, this map focuses upon because that's the only high-transit corridors we have per the state's definition within the ordinances. So in terms of frequency and, and quality of service. So that's the real dynamic. How do you fit the additional infrastructure onto the property when you don't have an exemption from parking?
Right. I guess what, what I'm trying to kind of whittle this down to is the thing that minimizes this law's impact on our community today, or as soon as this is all implemented, is the, the lack of the transportation as defined in this bill, right?
I think that's one dynamic. The other dynamic is, for one reason or another, there isn't a forethought in, in the idea that, you know, oh, I can go and subdivide my parcel down the line, pull my house up close in my setback so I have 40% of my rear property line, and move my house over in the setback so there's a path to travel for, for people to access that parcel. That's what I see as the, the greatest, the greatest hurdle because so many, it's not a hurdle to have, to add a second unit onto those properties where a property owner would, is a resident of that parcel and desires to stay there. But you can do that now with an ADU. Where it's a hurdle is there isn't that open space within overwhelming majority of parcels. You just go on Google Earth and scroll around, and I lost some time in my life today trying to find a suitable example for you. Because so many homes are what? They're centralized, centrally positioned on their lots. They're at least 25 feet back because that's our setback to, to, to structure, to garage. And so consequently, you have about 30-foot, 20-foot, 15-foot set rear yards. The 15-foot rear yard is the standard. Some people have deeper, some not. And so where do you find that 40%?
So what you're saying is the rate-limiting step of implication, the implications of this law are, is not the lack of mass transportation. It's where the, the homes are situated on lots throughout Bakersfield?
Yeah, in reality, if, if, and I'm speaking specific to being able to add that second, you know, that, that second duplex. I don't, there's not an impact, remember, there's not an impact in adding another unit onto a property right now. There's a provision for 1,200-square-foot accessory dwelling units. And anybody in an R1 zone can essentially entertain the idea of adding an ADU onto their property. And many have. We will be able to count those as part of our, our housing element. I'll be able to report that to you sometime in, in late March or early April. But, so that, although the transit corridor adds an additional hurdle because of the dynamic of needing to provide additional parking, the real issue is the built environment just doesn't readily, readily accept a 40% or a 40% size parcel, a 60-40 split because the homes are so centrally located.
Thank you.
Commissioner Biddle. Did you want to withdraw that? Okay. Commissioner Keter.
Two quick questions. Thank you for the presentation. That's not a question, just a thank you. The first question, it sounds like March might be the better time, but I was just curious how, if we have any kind of relative scale of how successful the ADU program has been within the city of Bakersfield? Have we seen a lot of interest from residents as far as ADUs and junior ADUs?
You know, the short answer would be yes. I just wish I could better quantify it for you. And since we're, that's a new, a new element of, of reporting to HCD as part of our annual reports, I'll, I'll be able to give you a concise number as it relates to calendar year 2021.
Great.
At our upcoming presentation. But it's my understanding that we have had great interest in ADUs being added into the community.
Great. Because I've just have seen, it looks like a great opportunity for some of the older neighborhoods in Bakersfield to be reimagined. Landlords to invest more by providing additional units for housing. And so it'd be great to see those numbers. And the second was about SB10. You had mentioned that transit-rich areas kind of precludes the city of Bakersfield as we're currently built. But then you did say that urban infill sites, many, that we kind of hit that category. Can you talk a little bit about the areas of town that would be impacted by the classification of an urban infill site?
Well, urban infill, if you define it, is an area that's closely compacted and surrounded by similar urban, urban development. And I, if I asked, and I did ask my, my, my GIS team, how many vacant residential parcels are available for development in the city right here and now? You know, think, think in terms of, on the newspaper, I think we see one or two burn downs a week. And ultimately, the code enforcement team comes along and demos those, and those parcels sit empty, they're available for development. The number I was given by, by Mr. Davison was 700 parcels. So there are 700 opportunities to rezone, rezone those vacant parcels as long as they're urban infill into an SB10. As noted in the presentation, I just felt like we already had tools that we could get there with. You might think about the, the urban infill program that's entertained by the Housing Authority of Kern County and that the Economic Community Development Department supports financially and is responsible for creating right now, I think we've final 28, 28 homes on seven individual lots. That's, those are fourplexes that are built into, into single-family residential neighborhoods today that are meant to meld and blend within the surrounding single-family, single-family residents. And that's, that's an, that's, that's an example of where we have an urban infill program that's providing suitable residential densities in the surrounding, in the neighborhoods that they're built within. If you looked at, you looked at the graphic for SB10, I just had to put it there, I didn't focus on it. There, that's a good example of what we could do on a single-family residential lot with an SB10 or SB14 zoning designation if, if it was within a traffic, traffic, transit-rich area. That's an example of the type of development. I mean, to get 10 units on a small, single-family lot, you're going to go vertical. Is it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? You would have to approve that request for ordinance change. So I'm, I'm not on the fence on the matter.
I could tell, yeah. But essentially, though, the way you described SB10, it's, it's somewhat up to the jurisdiction to, to make it a part of how we do business?
Yeah. If you look at the actual, so, provides a streamlined path that allows a local municipality to adopt an ordinance to rezone any parcel for up to 10 units of residential density per parcel, not per acre per parcel. So it provides a pathway to create a new zoning designation that would allow for a density, well, the density is determined by the, the space of the land. I suppose you could have a 40-acre parcel and put it into an SB10 and get four-acre lots. But by the same token, I'm not seeing where, at least in our setting, it provides anything but a duplicative, a duplicative measure that would, because we can upzone properties right now.
And then I guess my last question would be, you touched on the idea of small lot zoning, which I think there's some very interesting things in the state right now. Like I know there's a lot of 500-square-foot lots being piloted in Los Angeles that provide fee-simple home ownership and not the complicated structure of condos. Are we, as a city, looking at being a little bit more open to abandoning the 6,000-square-foot minimum and allowing like the 2,000-square-foot, the 25,000-square-foot as more of a buy right and less of a, because I, I mean, you kind of described that maybe we're not at vertical infill like this Philadelphia project, which is actually a really cool project, commissioners, if you get a chance to look it up. How the stairs work in that project is remarkable. But kind of on a horizontal scale, you know, like the, the example you showed of a very desirable neighborhood, are we looking to, to make that a little bit more easy for developers to take?
I could go on this for about a half hour. The city, the city's Development Services Department looks towards providing for streamlined processes, including ministerial permitting for residential development right here and now. The, if we are so fortunate as to provide, if the, the council and your commission embraces objective development standards, and that'll be discussed at PND at the Planning and Development Committee, that would give us a tool where that would be a ministerial process where you only have to comply with objective standards. But although the law was originally written for deed-restricted projects, you know, affordable housing projects, there are many cities that allow for market-rate projects to go through an objective review process. And right now, we do provide for, you know, ministerial processing for every use that's, a permitted use in that zone. So we are looking for ways to, to bring new tools to the development community to build denser, denser units and, and build them faster than they ever been able to do so in the past. And the intent of that is to realize what our, the title of our department is, which is Development Services, and to find ourselves in an advantageous position as it relates to the housing market in general.
Thanks again for the presentation.
About to Commissioner Biddle.
I love where Daniel was going with that with the downtown. But with the ADU, or the ADUs and the junior ADUs, does that give a separate address for the residents? Or does that just do like a little half address, or?
I think it's a separate address. That's correct.
So it pretty much does the same thing.
Yes. I want to make sure that yes/no question was the correct answer. I had to look toward staff. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Bowers. I'll be quick, great presentation, by the way. When I was in the Senate, typically the author of a bill would run their drills, League of City, and get everybody to join on. Do you know if the city of Bakersfield, did they take a position on this bill while I was in committee? Did we ever take a position on this bill?
I know that the city, I believe the city did provide a comment letter on nine or 10, but I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't remember exactly which one. There, there's a long list of municipalities that, that were in opposition to SB9 and SB10. I think a significant percentage of, of members of the League of California Cities provided comments, letters, and objection to, well, and I don't blame them because in essence, this is another, another step in the state's process of usurping local land use authority, usurping your authority to govern the city as you wish. And, and so I don't know whether we responded to both, but I'm fairly certain that we responded to one.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Kroll. The three-year thing, the affidavit that the person's going to live in there three years, does that have any teeth at all?
I was going to ask the commission to be our police force as it relates to confirming that those residents lived in those homes for the three-year period. And that, that's a very sarcastic way of saying that you, as a commission, could direct my Code Enforcement Division to focus their efforts on making sure that the owners of record were in that home three years and one day. But I don't know whether I have the workforce to, to actually do that.
No. The, I want to get back to this ADA, accessory dwelling unit versus this, because this is a lot split, which is different than what ADA accessory dwelling unit allows. I'm not 100% convinced that Mr. Johnson is right that the ADA gets a separate address. But this lot split certainly gets a separate address. And, you know, if you talk about lot split, then that person can then sell that split lot, correct?
That would be an option for that individual to do so, yes. Remembering that the property owner, the initial property owner only has to reside on one of those parcels in one of those homes for a three-year period. Essentially, in the end, you could have a fourplex rental or two duplex rentals within an established neighborhood.
But then you could sell that, sell that other back unit. If you build a fourplex in your backyard, you could then sell that fourplex to somebody else.
Yes, you could. God bless America.
The, one of the restrictions that's always kind of gave us trouble with these additional dwelling units and properties is driveway cuts. And, you know, the restrictions that Public Works has. And I know you say, say in here that Public Works can't limit, I don't remember what the wording was in there, but.
They can't require any off-site improvements or dedications of right-of-way.
But they can maintain their current, because a lot, a lot of the problems reside when you put driveway cuts in, as far as how far they are from other driveway cuts and other utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So how much flexibility is the Public Works going to be required to give these people?
I would note that you can't replace a requirement that would supersede the ability to do so. So I've dwelled on this, I mean, I think kind of outside the box as you read the ordinance as it's written. Oftentimes, state ordinances are very much open to interpretation and remembering that the state's ordinance usurps the, the local ordinance. And so when I thought about what, what you're talking about, I thought of it in two perspectives. In the first place, I'm not convinced that the ordinance requires the city to provide direct access to the rear parcels, okay? And it says through some instrument, an easement or what have you. And so as I started to think that through, that could be a single walkway to a back unit. And if it's not a transit-rich neighborhood, then that would mean that the, the required stalls to park, off-site stalls, would largely be placed in the front yards of the front residence, and there would be an easement, a parking easement for that rear parcel. You follow me? That, that, that seems like well within the parameters of the ordinance as you think it through. And so consequently, you could have some real aesthetic impacts into neighborhoods. I have a sense that if this, this project was under-processed, that the applicant, in most instances, I would think, would be amenable to placing a curb cut if he was using, you know, expanding the drive approach, if he was using that front yard setback for, for parking for rear, rear units. But there's, there's, that's the, those are the mystery questions of the ordinance. There's, there's always a, a, a maybe that, there, there isn't a certainty within state law. It's not, you know, fully vetted out oftentimes, and so it's open to interpretation. And today, the, the enforcement arm that interprets that ordinance would be HCD. And those are my three least. And those are my three least favorite letters in the alphabet at this point in juncture. And so I, I firmly respect the authority of, of the Housing and Community Development Department of the state of California. So I see this as being a possibility. The example I used had a home with a standard setback.
That was a good example because you get, you wind up with a flag lot, but no access to it.
Exactly. What if that individual chose to expand that home, expand that home such that the drive approach wasn't a, wasn't an option, simply left a gated sidewalk entry out to four parking stalls across the frontage and recorded a parking easement across that parcel? Remembering that perhaps our ordinance requires direct access to every parcel, but the ordinance, the, the state ordinance says that, like, you know, any, any restriction in our ordinance cannot supersede the development. That's, that's a, it's a very, you know, that's a very interpretive type of statement. Ideally, we would like to entertain flag lots or lots such as this where a driveway with an easement, a parking easement, would take vehicles to the rear parcel, and that would be good, sound land use planning and densification of, of an existing parcel. But that isn't necessarily what would happen in all instances. Where I get comfort is from the fact that so many of our parcels have centrally located homes on them, which makes it absolutely impossible to create a 40%, a lot that's 40% of the, of the home. I mean, if you think about your homes, my homes, staff's home, I, I don't know how I could do that simply because I have a 25-foot front yard setback, and my backyard is about 33 feet deep, and the, nary the two provide for 40% of my, my lot's area. So it, I think it's problematic in terms of the verbiage within the ordinance, but from, from looking at the built-in environment, I, I'm not going to say that it's not available to, to individual homeowners to explore, but I think in many instances, just the, the physicality, the dimensional nature of the built environment makes it very difficult in many instances. And I think that's recognized by UC Berkeley in their, their assessment that about 10% of the, the lots could provide for an additional 9,000 units. So that's, I look at that as being a very liberal determination, and if it's only 10%, I don't think that's, going back to my title, I don't think that's the end of single-family residential zoning for California. I think that it's another tool for municipalities entertained that provide for opportunities to provide additional density per the wishes of Sacramento and the, the stated housing crisis the, the state is within right now.
I'll, I'll leave you with one last question. I'm sure you've studied this quite a bit. Where do you anticipate the litigation to come from on this? Do you anticipate significant litigation and delays in implementation of this because of this, or what's your feeling on that?
Well, I, I, I'll say right here and now that, that I am, I'm not a legal law authority. I mean, in my explorations, there are particular cities that have passed emergency ordinances that ban the, ban the implementation of SB 9 and SB 10. But the legality of doing so, I do not know. And I, I, I would have to refer to, to the city attorney, Ms. Gennaro, in, in providing an opinion to the commission as it relates to that.
I don't need any more from legal. I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. Thank you very much for coming and speaking with us. Are there any more questions from the commission? Thank you very much for coming and speaking with us tonight and talking about this very interesting stuff. I think we all agree that, you know, we need to look for ways to create affordable housing without maybe making too much of a mess, so.
Thanks for the invitation. It was a pleasure.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 8, Communications.
I'm sorry, you were ahead of me. What was that again? Communications. Mr. Johnson, do you have any communications?
Thank you. Just to let you know that we will have a February 3 Planning Commission meeting.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 9, Commission Comments.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any comments? No comments? Next item?
Agenda item 10, Adjournment.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.